So, we're gonna go ahead and get started and then it looks like we're gonna have a curriculum update with a presentation. Mary, are you gonna do that for us?
Well, it's gonna be a mix of the middle school and high school presenting. So, I wanted to, we wanted to give you guys a little bit of an update of a proposal or an actual, actually moving forward with the Block Eight schedule at the middle school for the 2018-19 school year. This has been probably earlier this year, after we got back our R.I. Step scores and just thinking about our changing population, Dr. Kaiser had a really good conversation, separately and then together with me and Tom, and said, "We've got, what we're doing, it's not hurting kids at the middle school, but it's not working as effectively as we need to, to reach our students." So, Tom, and it was weird, it happened on a weekend, I get this phone call, and when Tom Gerhart calls you on the weekend, you answer, because it's important. And anyone who knows Tom knows that's true, and he said, "I've been thinking about it." He had thought about all different types of schedules, but really when it came down to it, how can we align with the high school was his big thing, to get the kids ready. Let's, is it possible? I'd like to look at a Block Eight schedule, is it possible? I wanna really highlight as, because tonight, Tom will present, then Liz will give us an update and talk about the alignment with the new grad path, and then our curriculum and instruction coordinator at the middle school will talk about some of the PD that we'll have moving forward to get our staff and students ready for this process. But I really wanna highlight, and those of us who have been in education for a long time can validate this, but it is virtually unheard of and very rare for a middle school and high school principal to work together so collaboratively and closely in a district. I have been in seventeen different states working with schools and closely with twenty-two districts here in Indiana alone, in my, when I worked as an educational consultant. And it's rare, and it's really an awesome thing when it happens. Liz and Tom work together so well and have collaborated to bring this idea to life, and it's gonna have a huge impact on our, on our student achievement. So, let's jump into that. So, the Block Eight proposal for the middle school is, we're looking to implement a traditional Block Eight schedule, like the high school currently uses. We're looking at that same A-B format, with the Block A being a beach, or Day A being a beach day, Day B being a Grove day. So, very similar, if you are familiar with the high school schedule, if you've had kids at the high school, it's set up with period blocks, one through four on a beach day, five through eight on a Grove day. That alignment between the middle school and high school is very important, so we wanted to keep that format similar. Roughly for instruction time, we'll have eighty-minute classes on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. We do have early release for PLCs on Wednesdays, so about seventy-five minutes per class on Wednesdays. Each student, just like at the high school, would have eight classes per semester. I wanted to give you a sample of what a seventh or eighth grade schedule might look like. Full disclosure, just like at the high school, not every single seventh grader's gonna have math Block One or English Block Two. These are just sample schedules. So, you'll notice, currently, we offer roughly, what is it? HRT five classes and then HRT. At the middle school. We'll be able to expand that, and the big addition, as you can see, is every student would be able to have a math and an English lab. And Tom's gonna talk a little bit more, what do we mean by math and English lab? And then we are expanding elective for middle school and high school, or for the middle school students. I wanna point out, as Tom comes up, that this is cost neutral for us in terms of staffing. We are not asking from our staff. Block Eight schedule is the most expensive Block Eight schedule to run, but we are reallocating our staff. We have a lot of dual-licensed teachers at the middle school, so we are easy, it's easy to move them around. Additionally, we make, we are, have plans, and we gotta thank Liz for this, to share some staffing between the middle school and high school, since we have the same schedule. So, we're gonna be able to expand those, this opportunity, or give this opportunity to our middle school kids at a cost neutral, with a cost neutral approach.
So, as we move into next year and beyond, and Liz will talk a little bit about the changing accountability plan. In order to have a, have a well-rounded student, the State Board of Education has, has a number of things. So, one of those is going to have us need to put back into our curriculum, eighth grade science. So, that doesn't mean that Ag is going anywhere, and we can explain that a little bit. The second thing that that schedule will do, she talked about having a, having a math and English lab. When you combine that with our current math and English, we're going to increase seat time for our, for our kids in math and language arts forty-five percent. So, they're going to be getting a heavy dose of math and language arts, and that's, that's going to clearly benefit us in helping prepare them for the ninth grade. So, we're talking about what those labs would look like, and that's developing right now. We're talking with, with our staff about what they, they think that might look like and some ideas that they have, but certainly one thing that we are married to is this concept of differentiation. So, our kids will be in leveled labs, so at-risk kids or lower-level kids that are in need of remediation, well, we'll have that eighty-minute lab for that remediation part. Our higher-level kids will have opportunities for enrichment, potentially. So, there are a number of things that we hope to be able to do with these different leveled labs in both language arts and math. So, another concept that we want to do is expose more students and hook more students into Ag and FFA. So, we're looking at expanding and are able to do that with the way we have things structured into a couple of sections in the seventh grade. Sam and Clinton and I, for a long time, have talked about growing that. They can only support thirty-five kids right now, so we wanna get more kids and, I'm talking about the FFA schedule part. We would like to have students begin, and it's really a two-fold process. I've talked a lot about academics right now, that's certainly something that's clearly very important, but we also wanna talk about with the pathways in the transition from eighth to ninth grade, starting to get middle school kids to think a little bit more in a high school mentality. So, we're gonna look at offering them choice in their electives, much like the high school does with their ninth-grade classroom. So, and that kinda wraps up that last little point as well, in that alignment between the high school and middle school. So, what are the benefits of a Block Eight proposal? Well, certainly, teachers will gain preparation time, but they will also gain classes to prepare for. So, as we have things currently structured, almost every teacher has two different subject areas to prepare some, so let's use, for example, Chad Mann. Chad Mann has seventh-grade math, and a different class to prepare for is seventh-grade math lab, because it's differentiated. So, so if he has four math classes and two math labs, those two math labs might be a high and a low, so those are different preparations. And that, that helps us, both in teacher and students, in that vertical articulation that we've worked on so long, for so long now, because when you teach seventh-grade math and eighth-grade math, or seventh-grade science and eighth-grade science, then you have an idea of what's coming. You can anticipate, you can adapt your seventh-grade curriculum to meet your eighth-grade needs and so forth. So, earlier I talked about adding that science back, those eighth-grade standards, which are on the periphery of Ag, but an eighth-grade science program will really, really drive home those state, state standards. We're looking at potentially adding shared teachers, as she talked about, so weightlifting class, world language exposure for middle school kids. So, really hoping, hoping to do a lot to, to get them in a high school kind of mentality in the two years that we have done.
So, we've been at a little bit of the micro level with logistics, specifically at the middle school. We'll take a step back to the macro level and kinda consider the reasons that we're doing this. This conversation is still ongoing at this point, and frustratingly, if the intent of the A through F accountability system was transparency, we are a ways away from that at this point. So, we've included this, because of this sort of macro view. So, the accountability system for the federal grade is changing for everyone, no matter what. Next year, we will get a letter grade based on that ESO plan that every student received that. That is somewhat set in stone, though we've heard recently that even that might change. What's going through the rulemaking process right now with the State Board of Ed is the state accountability system. So, unfortunately, we may potentially have two different letter grades next year and in the coming years, if they can't iron out some of those differences. So, this details a little bit of that, and I just wanna highlight at this point that, again, this is still proposed. So, we have four meetings coming up, the State Board of Ed has four meetings coming up throughout the state to get feedback from stakeholders on that. We're organizing a concerted effort with the counselors association, the principals association, the superintendents association, to really highlight some of the concerns with this. One major concern is that we see a complete decrease in measuring growth at the high school. Another concern is the two indicators that are being added. One is well-roundedness at the K through eight level. It's really difficult to track. It's just another measurement of proficiency. And then, for the high school, we're looking at on-track, and they have defined a way to do that for any ninth grader who's passing ten classes with no more than one F in a core content class, that student will count. So, there are obviously some concerns with this. It's, like I said, not set in stone yet. We anticipate the State Board of Ed voting in April, and it'll go through the rulemaking process. But this is really that macro view. We know it's going to change, so we wanna be sure that the conversations we're having, K through twelve, are really responding to what we're going to be assessed and measured for. But just a quick update in the high school, basically, I just can't simply say enough, the attractive piece of beach growth was the connectedness of the schools and our feeder systems and the conversations we're able to have. For principals to be able to meet the, you know, the times that we're able to meet, you know, to have those conversations and know some of the intricate details of what's happening in our building, that only makes every single level stronger for our kids, and it's really fantastic. So, we are just a product of all of their hard work, but we're really looking forward to some of this alignment. So, we'll be looking at delivering the PSAT eight in the middle school at the end of this year. We will be able to use that data going into the new accountability test for our students, looking at the PSAT ten, as well as the SAT for accountability. We're ninety-nine percent sure that's done, but we won't know until the end of the legislative session in March for sure. Our career choice alignment, Tom talked a little bit, when we look at students being able to identify that through Naviance at the middle school, transitioning that to what they are to look at at the high school, looking at CTE tracks as early as seventh grade, our kids will only benefit from that when we look at implementing the new pathways. That on-track indicator is huge. If we, if we have that measurement and we know, all of the research is pretty clear, if freshmen struggle, they're going to struggle all four years. So, if we can get kids as seventh graders, middle school teachers and administration know the kids that are struggling, let's intervene sooner, let's help them transition, and this alignment will really help with that. So, we'll see benefits from that on-track indicator. Quick update on the locally created pathways. We're still in conversation with State Board of Ed about what those parameters will look like, but we will bring to the board anything that we will be submitting as a locally created pathway, once we know what those rules are. We'll look to make sure that all of our kids are serviced in that regard.
Okay, I've got the one that's small here. I'm gonna move this one. Okay, so, middle school teachers have been asked about this, and so we've got some comments of what they think could happen with going to Block Eight schedule. So, as you see there, I've kinda highlighted some of the important parts of this, but we talked about science. I taught science for twelve years, so I personally feel like it's very, very important for student success in the high school area. Problem-solving and critical thinking are, in fact, you can get those in any subject area, but science so much lends itself to it and can give a direct pathway to very clear-minded, this is problem-solving, this is thinking. Sometimes that doesn't transfer very well with other classes, so it takes a science class perhaps to pull it into this is a role model scenario. Students having well-developed science curriculums throughout their education will help in several areas where we've shown deficiencies so far. They struggle in problem solving, they struggle in thinking right now. And so, those are true, those things have been really good, and we have been getting over the years, and we've been making some progress, but we wanna see more of the leaps and bounds in growth as we go forward. Not only does it do that, though, it also helps with reading development and, because it expands so much vocabulary. Kids will get to a science text and not have any familiarity with the words that are on there, and so if they don't have the context for that, reading that and understanding it becomes such a bother, it's a trouble. This is an opportunity for more creative lesson planning. We see teachers working together. We see social studies and language arts teachers, math and science, all teachers collaborating, like we do now, but in a more multi-level group. So, we can get kids from seventh grade, eighth grade, and suddenly send classes together and just maybe mix, don't know if that could happen yet. We're still talking about all the scenarios that could happen, so we're excited about the possibility of that. Labs focused on inaccuracies in skill levels. We want to make, try some learning opportunities. Helping math in the LA, by doing this, we can show some data later on, why, what's been going on so far, it's been not hurting kids. We are growing, as you've seen through our I-Step data, but how else can we get on some of those more kids passing too? And stations for hands-on engagement. Ag does have hands-on engagement, too. Seventh grade science has hands-on engagement. You have the arts, you have Bay, you have all those sort of things, too, but now you add one more thing for, just to get kids excited out and engaging with school and with the role models.
So, as we talk about moving forward from, from today, we will continue to meet with our stakeholders and our teachers about ideas and feedback that they have. We've done that twice already. We had a, we used the whole staff PLC in January and in February to present this concept to our teachers, and, and I can tell you that certainly our math and, and language arts teachers are in love with this idea and really see it as having great potential to grow our kids. We are going to meet this Friday, Mary and me and Brad, Chad Mann, who is seventh-grade math, and Wendy Eckstein, who is eighth-grade language arts, and Liz is going to join us and we're going to sit down and start looking at indicators for how, what kind of kids do we wanna place in this type of lab, and what's the lab going to look like? If you know either one of those two teachers, they have a multitude of ideas about what they would like to see, so the development of that could not be in better hands. We will, again, as I said, decide what kind of data we wanna collect on our incoming seventh graders and our incoming eighth graders, and we'll do that by the end of February and early March, and Mary and I will probably have some conversations about that over spring break. Our counselors will have to adjust the way that we schedule right now, so like the high school does, our kids are going to have to look at everything that's available and make selections, so we're gonna have to work with them on how that's gonna look. And then, after spring break, Mr. Loar, what are we willing to do after?
Well, we made some adjustments to our cluster, what the cluster was going to be about. Right now, we're doing academic conversations, teaching kids how to talk to each other in an academic way, in group settings, projects, that sort of thing. So, we've been working with that, and to expiate that just a little bit, after spring break, we started to look at what might, a Block Eight scheduling cluster look like? What would that mean? What kind of questions would we have? So, luckily, my wife works at the high school, so I have a source at home who we can talk to. How does time management change? What does that look like? These are questions teachers are gonna ask. Middle school kids plus eighty-minute block, what does that look like? I don't know if you've ever been in the middle school and seen middle schoolers interact with all of us and each other in a fifty-five, sixty-minute time period, but they're energetic and not unlike our little Spider-Man that was running around here earlier, which is very cute to see. But we'll talk about things like managing student behavior and motivating students, what does a transition look like, lesson structure and pacing, list goes on. How, how does the, the structure of a lesson for eighty minutes, how's that time management breakdown? How do you take a curriculum and adapt it to just eighty minutes? So, like right now, I might be teaching a lesson Monday and Tuesday, but now I've only got Monday, if I'm a history teacher or whatever. So, what do I do to blend those two classroom blocks, if it makes sense, or do I expand one and then cut out some stuff that I felt wasn't quite as strong or maybe wasn't as important, but was good stuff for thinking, but maybe didn't hit on the curriculum side of it enough? So, those would be some tough decisions made by teachers when we go to something like this, because they planned for a whole lot of time, and now we're asking them to condense some things down, which is gonna be, it's gonna be trial by fire a little bit, but it is a, a great experience, because you really get down into your curriculum, get to know how to teach those kids. So, I think the challenge might be very exciting for teachers. We have co-teaching meetings coming up and professional development on that. We do some co-teaching right now, and we wanna see what that looks like at a high school level, so maybe we can see what that looks like at a middle school level. So, a little more exploration on that. Talked about Block Eight planning structures, so, yeah, that's one of the things we're going to do. We're gonna meet as curriculum developmental teams and try and figure out what does that support look like? How do we plan this? How do we align each department? How about that vertical articulation we talked about earlier? We will have clusters, we will have PLCs. I have like three to four clusters that I can dedicate to it this school year and going into next school year, so I feel pretty good about that. And we have some PLC time coming up that will be available, too, so we're really looking at this hard and really wanna take it seriously and make sure we're gonna do it real good by.
I have a couple of questions, if that's all right? First of all, discussions would be a good opportunity at the building level to talk about, because this is such a dramatic, it really is impactful in the day-to-day, so has it been a discussion item yet?
It has not been a discussion item, but we've done twice with the full staff.
Okay, but I think it needs to be in there, and this is a good presentation to provide for them to get that feedback, because I, I just anticipate from a personal director standpoint and on all of that, you know, what is the trickle-down effect of this? For example, you know, I love that you started out, didn't cost money.
One of the things I said to Tom Gerhart is, "Can this work?" And I was like, "It, I think Paul's gonna love it. It can't cost any money, or Dr. Keely's not gonna love it." And he was like, "We can do this."
So, I just would recommend that, so that it's formally, it's placed there, so that you have open opportunity for, you know, clear conversation. Number two, does it affect the, the evaluation model? Does this create anxiety maybe with a longer evaluation timeframe, or does it, does it kind of affect that piece or not?
That actually has not come up from our teacher comments, because we already do this in the high school, and we have a lot of people who are very close friends or married to each other between schools. I think that, that has actually not come up yet, but it may. I do know that, and I think the I.L.T. members at the middle school are going, are asking, "So, we're gonna sit for an eighty-minute observation? How does, what does that look like?" Because it's a little different. I mean, it's, it's very different.
Takes some training.
It takes a little bit of exposure.
Yeah, but again, we have a good resource here.
Well, as you were, you have to chunk things out. There's a lot of development time, which is a little bit, because you can assess and make adjustments right then versus homework coming in, writing in.
Okay, thank you.
One member comments, questions?
I have a question. Do you find in this eight, eight blocks, that because the class time is reduced a little bit, which is, which is cool, do the kids stay more engaged because the class time is a little bit shorter, they don't have time to get bored as quickly?
In a traditional middle school schedule?
Versus, traditional versus this? This would be better, I would think.
Yeah, I, well, this, these are, I, there's a lot of research. I actually just at the PLC, and I can share that with you guys, there's a lot of research about how, when properly structured, which is why we wanted Brad to come here to talk about the PD that he'll be doing, because it's gonna, it's gonna require some practice and development for our staff.
Sure.
That you actually see a decrease in student discipline issues and an increase in student engagement when it's, when it's done correctly. So, I think that how we implement it is gonna be very important and dependent on how I would answer that question.
But that could be really beneficial to the kids.
It absolutely could be.
If this is done well, we might even see some that may not have excelled as much do much better in this block system.
I can tell you that informally, we polled some sophomores and juniors, and we're actually gonna hit up some of the, Brad's gonna be using some of his data to share in his professional development, but several sophomores and juniors, in fact, I haven't found one, have all said, "I wish we would've had Block Eight scheduling in middle school. I would've done so much better. I would've learned how to be better organized. I could've been involved, involved in more activities after school."
Well, that's a benefit, too, that we have at middle school, with that HRT class, those are the things we talk about. Now, we, we teach them to do, that's gonna be one that's coming up, is how do I organize myself to be successful? We've done things like the rescue, we've done fire drill, we could do procedural things, too, but we have a great opportunity right there in the middle of the day to reach every single student in our building. We talked about this at last time. And so, I think that's a prime example of, this is where we train them to act within the middle school schedule. That's a great question.
Are there any other middle schools around?
It slows the number of transitions, right?
Yes, you're reading my mind.
Yeah.
We will act, that's okay.
Middle school.
We, we will actually reduce the number of transitions we have, so one of the, one of the worst things that we do in middle school is, is put five hundred kids in the hall at the same time, eight times a day.
Yeah.
So, that we're not gonna do that anymore under this schedule, so hopefully we'll see some benefit from that.
That's another question, as far as middle school.
Are there other middle schools around that do this?
Um.
That you know of?
I do not know of any. We looked for some. We, we did this a long time ago. We did this from like nineteen ninety-five to two thousand. We were, we were on a block schedule at the middle school.
Two thousand one. Might go here, we stopped it.
So.
So, we have, we actually have a number of teachers we know that who have taught this way, and like, we were just came from high school.
Why did we go away from it, do you recall?
We went to teaming concepts.
Okay, which was kind of, yeah, that was a while, but I will tell you, I can say with confidence, we don't, I cannot find in Marion County one. I don't know of any outside of Marion County. There are several middle schools who do what we call a double block, where they have a double block of math and English, but it's ran in a traditional schedule. I asked, I told, I asked Tom, I said, "Tom, you do realize that when schools start hearing about this, they're gonna wanna kinda visit the school?" Because a lot of middle schools are looking to change that. We're just being aggressive about it, and he's like, "I recognize that." So, there, I think they're gonna be interested. "How did you implement a Block Eight schedule in a middle school setting?" It's, it's very innovative.
I think it's good to think outside the box.
I'm totally, I'm totally on board, too.
Yeah, me too.
I have another question. Not to change the subject exactly, but I guess I didn't realize science wasn't required in middle school?
We took, we took Ag instead.
Okay.
So, you did have science at both grade levels?
Yes.
But I'm on board.
Yeah.
Science for all.
What, what's your current length of class right now?
Our current length is, it varies.
Three or four classes.
I would say average fifty-five or sixty minutes.
And you're gonna go to what?
Eighty.
And the huge advantage, man, think about, you have all these little kids, every five, fifty-five minutes, they're running and going. When you're an eighty-minute class, they can introduce the lesson, they can practice the skill and master, or they start mastering during that eighty-minute block. Right now, we send them home, say, "Go do this homework." Well, they're on their own in many cases, so the eight-minute block, even though those courses are made every other day, you know, it's just much more effective, and having gone from a traditional high school schedule to a block schedule, and I was a principal, your discipline referrals will go down, because the majority of the issues happen in the hallway.
And that's what we want?
And, and I get, I get, having a daughter, like many of you had kids that went to school here, my daughter went from the seventh- My daughter went from a seventh period day to an eighth period day here. It is the best preparation for college.
I second that.
Just so, my daughter will tell you, it was the best thing she did by coming here, her junior, senior year, because she, she learned, it's always a two-day cycle. And our seventh and eighth graders, they are, you know, they have to learn how to do that. They can. So I, you know, even though the minutes per week might be a little less, the efficiency will definitely be there. And that, and that's where Brad will come in and really work on how to utilize that time. And, and the whole instructional process will get better. And the kids will focus more because they're gonna be even more engaged. They're not gonna be waiting for that bell. They're gonna be up and moving, they're gonna have some things. And, you know, performing arts band and choir, they're gonna have more time, you know, to be able to do the, really, really take a more efficient time, so. Other questions?
Just one final comment. And thank you for breaking down all the silos between the buildings. I have to say, just an observation from my four years on the board, I just see the growth in the way you guys are communicating and collaborating together. And I think this is a product of that collaboration. So thank you and kudos to you. I'm sure it'll be successful and meaningful for our students.
Well, thank you. And I, I will point out that it's all connected to what Erin and Greg presented about math block. It's all connected and it's all communicated.
It also ties in why we wanna go to a sixth-grade academy and tie it to the middle school over four or five. Now, I will tell you, Todd, you did pull me aside this morning after I was eating breakfast. He goes, you know, if you just put a little dish out there in the back of this building, we'll keep sixth grade. But it, it's all this, as you think about the whole reorganization, this is all part of that and how it ties together. Other questions from the board members? Comments?
Oh, thank you very much. As a parent and a husband of a wife who has a block schedule, I'll tell you that she operates, she says, yes, that's the way to go. And, uh, I just, I just wish you would've implemented it a couple of years ago. But, um, no, I, I really appreciate you working together. I think it's awesome. Uh, you have, uh, you know, the fact that we'd be able to offer, uh, world language, Spanish elective, and, uh, more science, uh, would be great. So, uh, and in fact, my daughter, a couple of days ago, expressed some frustration in the hallways that she wasn't able to walk a particular way and had to go around, uh, through, by the band room to get to the band room or something, there's a hallway that's closed. So she, she's having frustrations with, with hallways. So any less transitions is definitely very, very good. So I appreciate that as well.
I also do wanna clarify that, uh, social emotional learning and our peer mentors, which have been a huge success this year in the middle school, are integrated very easily into this schedule next year. So that couple, I mean, we're really getting these kids ready for high school.
Okay, we'd like to thank the hard work and dedication of all the principals. Uh, we have some additional exciting things that will be coming down the road, curriculum instruction as we, as we move forward.
Okay, Ms. Melody, I believe you're up now.
Yes, and I'll just, I'll just highlight a few of the things I included, cause I know you've read it. I wanna echo what Tom said about Senator Donnelly. That was such a great visit and he even, I mean, he was there, like he said, an hour. But he stayed to kind of discuss with the students and get their input again. And just, it was, it's a wonderful thing to see. So we were really thankful for that. Another thing you, I hope you clicked on that link or saw it in the Hornet Blast about Dr. Kaiser filmed a short interview. And he's going to continue to do that on different topics. He'll start, he'll do it again this Monday. And we'll include those links on Facebook and in the Hornet Blast. But I think it's good to hear from our superintendent and get an explanation for some of the upcoming things occurring. So that's a, that's a good part. Spring grant applications were distributed this week, or last week, end of last week, uh, to all the teachers and those proposals are due on April thirteenth. And then I just include another link for you to see about Donors Choose, the teachers' projects that are there. It's very interesting to see those and it saves the district a lot of money, correct, Tom? Donors Choose. And so we're really thankful for those kind of projects, that we can fund those. And we fund ten thousand dollars, but it really equals twenty-plus thousand that goes into our classrooms through the Donors Choose project. So that's all I've got for highlights.
Let's, uh, go ahead and look at our minutes. We need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes on January ninth.
I'll approve.
Thank you, Janice. Thank you, Beth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, let's look at claims. We need a motion to approve the claims for February.
I approve. April?
April, thank you.
I'll second.
Is that Janice?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? I don't think we have any, uh, public comment on the agenda, so let's move into the business update. Dr. Keeley, is it okay if I go ahead and take this motion and then I'll turn it over to you?
Have you, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the updated contract with the Kelly Services for our substitute teachers. Beth, thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, April. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Okay, we'll turn it over to you.
So that Exhibit A was provided to you for the Kelly Educational Services, which is our substitute teacher, uh, program that we have right now. And basically, uh, we as an organization noticed that our sub numbers, uh, had progressively gone down in the last two years. And we investigated and surrounding district, districts had raised their pay per day. So we are now the same as Perry to the west of us and we are now the same as Lawrence Township. So, and before we were fifteen dollars, uh, below them. So anyone in this area could easily get to Lawrence Township or Perry, um, and choose that, that location to get. And when you add fifteen dollars a day, every day, seven for the year, um, it's quite a bit of money. So, um, we, the administrative costs for that remain exactly the same. So, um, that'll be a good opportunity and I'll wait a couple of months to tell you how, um, how we're doing on that, so. I also think we're gonna give bonus, bonuses on Mondays. Fridays, I guess, they have a lot more subs, uh, available because of the structure of I U P Y now. They, they've targeted I U P Y students and they don't have classes on Fridays primarily. And so they've got a, a very large bank of available subs for Fridays now, uh, moving forward. So that should help out in the spring. So I'm doing, we're doing all we can for that. As far as, I went through an entire update with you and I put, you know, a laundry list of items, because this is the busiest, it really is outside of passing the budget in August. This with, with taxes and W twos and, and, and all the things that we're doing administratively in the business office. Kathy and Eileen have really, um, worked hard to get some of those. And they're very technical and, and you have to be on the money, you know? You have to do the right, and then Kathy did the W nine, or the I nines and, and ten ninety-nines and all of that stuff going out. So she's, um, working to the bone. So she's had a, an incredible, uh, longer month really, um, in our area. So I was asked to give you a cash balance history, a cash projected balances document as well as provided to you. The preliminary budget statement, which is called the seventeen eighty-two notice. So the green one here is really just a very, you might need your glasses, I know this is pretty small for you. But, you know, it's a snapshot of eleven, twelve years. And it really gives you the ebb and flow of how the, not only has the economy affected our dollars, but the restructuring that we worked really hard over two years of staffing patterns has taken us, um, back into a, a better location right now. And I anticipate in calendar year twenty eighteen, even though we provided raises for certified staff and administrators, we also, um, you know, will eventually propose a conversation on, uh, the classified staff. And even with those additions, I anticipate, uh, and it's not in here, but I anticipate a change into eighteen of approximately a little over a half a million dollars in deposit. And I'll talk about that. So that's just a snapshot in history for you. And then this budget comparison, it's a larger document, is really just a top sheet on top of the preliminary budget for you. So FYI, um, the preliminary budget is given to business managers early in January and then I have to come back and, and work with them if I feel like there needs a correction. And so in that, this is a corrected form, because two weeks after, uh, I had sent a response and I said, you made an error, we really need that error, please make a change. And sometimes they don't even respond. There's been years where I didn't even get a response. Well, this year they called me on Friday at noon and I literally worked for four and a half hours that Friday. And we got a three hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred dollars, um, mailed to us by five o'clock that afternoon. So I was really proud to say that every one of our tax rates and levies is in the exact location to what we anticipated and needed, we felt we needed, and what you approved back in August. So to kinda see how that takes five to six months to come to fruition, it does. So this is really complex, all of these, um, documents in the seventeen eighty-two notice. And I would never expect you to go through all of those. But in there, it breaks down the tax rate, it breaks down the debt, uh, shows what payments. It breaks down what we call the appropriations, which is the top page, which is the permission to spend. And then it has miscellaneous revenue and some other legal things in there as well. So that's that whole, uh, two, two through fifteen pages. However, as a summary on the very top, um, Dr. Kaiser, I felt like it was really critical for you to understand that in this yellow format, even though it appears that the tax rated funds go down in one, two, three, four, five of eight funds, that is the ebb and flow of doing business. We don't really have an advan- advantage necessarily to have large cash balances, uh, to go into the next year. And so those are gonna ebb and flow a hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, depending on what bills we have or whether we buy high-power equipment or like we had bought a maintenance truck, a Chevy Silverado or something like that, you know? You have big-ticket items that come. So this year, this, that we will spend more in the tax rated funds, but that's because we have a bus lease that we've been talking to you for over a year now. Um, there are some certain bills that we have to pay. However, the great news is if you go down to the bottom, lines thirty-one and thirty-three is the general fund in the rainy day. I worked diligently on a cash flow that is a very long document that, um, indicates every single month, you know, projected employee costs and other costs. Other entities such as Rice or Southside Special Services or Franklin Township SIT Program or other things that we do, including electricity and water and, and keeping the lights on, you know? And so I watch that every month and I, I completed that here for January to make sure that we're gonna be okay in twenty eighteen. And I anticipate, even with the raises that have been on the table, we'll go from one million, forty-four thousand to one point five million in the general fund. And we'll be able to take the rainy day from three hundred and fifty thousand to a little over six hundred thousand dollars. Those are really important numbers. That's really what the S and P five hundred and the Department of Local Government Finance and the Board of Education for the State of Indiana look at to say, are you fiscally healthy? Are you making administrative decisions correctly so that you can pay your bills? So that you can continue to increase cash balance? And I feel very confident right now and with these numbers as they are, that in calendar year twenty eighteen, we're in a good place. Okay?
And just, just point out, column G, line thirty-five, three seventy-three, three forty-five, and column J, two years later, two one, two eight, oh, eight one. That's kinda like the Philadelphia Eagles winning the Super Bowl. They were not in the playoffs two years ago. And we all remember a January meeting, we set a target of increasing at five hundred thousand a year. And I just gave Erin our fiscal binder that you guys got last January. And we are, we're on target, actually above where we should, you know, we had wanted to be. But we wanna stay within that range and still five hundred thousand dollars, continue to grow that even past eighteen and nineteen and twenty. Cause again, we wanna have ten percent, ten percent of our cash balance, we're twenty-three million dollars. We're a bit close to it right now, but we need to get way above that. And we can do that by, again, we'll talk about some other things in our work session. Even by, you know, working through those, we still think we're gonna hit this target. And, uh, so very positive and it was a lot of blood, sweat and tears and, uh, a lot of, like, really, I'll go back and just tell the principals, thank you, they really worked with some staffing patterns. And, uh, so very positive.
And the final driver really of the budget is absolutely the mortgage payment to keep the buildings, you know? And to own what we own. And so we've provided to you a nice, uh, color chart graph here that indicates that I'm happy to say that today, this year in twenty eighteen is the highest amount, and this is a positive.
It's two-sided.
It's two-sided, yeah, it's on the backside. This year is the highest debt payment. And from here moving forward, it does nothing but go down. And that's awesome. So I'm tickled to be able to tell you that. However, it's good that we have a cash balance right now for this year and next year in debt service, because the debt payment in twenty eighteen is up about two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty maybe. And we need to make that payment and we have the cash balance to do that and the levy and the things that we do. So that's a major driver. So this is kind of looking forward, in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, we see substantial drops in the debt payment. And those are opportunities to keep the levy the same maybe at that time and do some other H V A C or do some windows or do some other things. And I know that that's eight years down the road. But it looks like we're pretty, pretty leveled out here for the next six years at least, okay? And with the circuit breaker issues we've experienced as a corporation, we can pay our bills. And that's a, that's a great thing. There's other places that have a circuit breaker not even as high as ours, that are in much more of a difficult world because they've not leveled off their debt and we have. And so I'm, I'm happy to be able to present that to you and show you those. A board member had asked me, can we refinance? Can we look at some of our issues? And we've spent since two thousand eight doing, you know, doing every issue we can. So we're, we've really taken a wonderful advantage of the low interest rate market in the last four years. And so we're right where we are. And a lot of those bond payments are just, need to be paid at this time. They're like, the interest has been paid and they want the principal. And so it's just really kinda where it's at. So that's a good thing. So I just wanted to give you that update so you knew those are numbers.
And as we think ahead to our strategic planning, if we decide to move forward something, this gives us a great opportunity to kind of balance things out. You know, let's say we go to, we wanna go X amount of dollars. We can start with small payments and gradually go up and fulfill that gap. So, and we'll talk more about that down the road as we, you know, continue to have that discussion. But it does give us some flexibility, uh, if we decide to move forward with some things, so. But again, we are, I, I can't say the difference between now and a year ago and where we are across the board in all funds. So we've made some great strides.
And the nice thing is we have Umbal and Ice Miller that are very professional organizations that work with us diligently to help guide us in those decision makings. So that's good. All right, personnel and, uh.
Can we pause just for a moment?
Sure.
Just for a second. These documents that we asked for this evening, um, I just wanna make sure there's no other questions that anybody wants to ask while Dr. Keeley's here, while Dr. Kaiser's here. Um, you know, these are all things that we requested. So is there further discussion that we need to have, any further questions before we move forward?
I don't have any questions on that.
Oh, really great explanation.
No, I think there is.
Thank you.
I wanna say kudos to your faculty because working for the state revenue, three times out of five, it's real possible someone at the state made a mistake, so always question it. Always question.
And. Well, and they have a volume of work to do. They deal with millions of dollars, so it's good. Thank you.
But thank you for staying on top of it because, yeah, it's super easy to put a number in the wrong spot.
I, I agree.
It's super easy to hit the wrong cell in Excel.
Thank you for all the forums and lectures that you went through with us this evening. So now let's move on to personnel.
Okay, and there's a motion for you. In, we had a snow day early in January and we, uh, requesting just to flip-flop that vacation day to the day that people were off. And then there's an opportunity for anyone who isn't a vacation employee to actually work on President's Day so they can have that as a paid day. But if we didn't do that, then all the, those individuals would lose that vacation day because they're working on that vacation day. So we just were flip-flopping that to kinda help balance the whole, uh... So, we just were flip-flopping that to kind of help balance the whole salary kind of thing.
I move we flip-flop.
Thank you, Gerald. Thank you, Beth. All those in favor? I'm just hearing staffing cabinet update.
And you have this document, just a graph here, that spreadsheet. Tom, you wanna talk about that? Just kind of-
Looking into the fu-, yeah, looking into the future, you know, I do anticipate two to four teachers have expressed interest in retiring. And so, that's gonna change some dollars. And that's, that's something we have to pay attention to as we get to March, April, and May because then that creates opportunity. Because when a teacher goes off and we put some dollars there for you at the top of the scale, if you hire a less experienced teacher or, you know, even a mediocre five to seven years experienced teacher, which are, you know, good teachers, we have forty thousand dollar cost savings. And those are very good opportunities. And then, those, those add together toward the bottom. As far as that opportunity, transition to teaching, people are at South Grove and then at Hornet Park. And there are people who are not quite certified with a teaching license, but they're moving into that area. And so, we can either add or we can enhance those areas going on.
And that transition to, that's pretty common. We have, we probably have ten people that have done that. They either are working and go get a degree or they have a degree, but they don't have a teaching degree. And once they enter that transition part, we pay them as a teacher and they're teaching full-time. But they have to at least be at that four-year college level or, you know, as you, as we go through classified staff, you'll see some people that are gonna remain at an hourly rate. But once they get that college degree, then we can pay them as a teacher. That's a huge difference because you'll see two of these things that are, that are gonna stay at that, that level until they get that degree. Okay? So, we have, one is beginning her masters, it was social work. And we have another one that'll be finishing up and start student teaching in the fall. And so, again, they both have been told they'll be on a teaching salary. And so, we have to reflect that because that's an expense because we're going up. But we're saving on the other, you know, the other side of that. And again, notice that, that's eighty-five thousand if you look at the last page. Tom and I worked on this together. We're anticipating another minimum of two hundred and fifty thousand in the eighteen, nineteen school year based on the two-year binding budget. So, right now, we're already looking at three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars going into the fall to provide raises in the fall calendar year. And I have these for nine years if you ever wanna look at them. By the end of the year, I think somebody have seen them, they're like a mosaic puzzle of coming and going. So, that's our starting point. We feel really good about that. We've got two that have officially retired and another one that is probably gonna retire. We just haven't seen the letter yet. So, that has come in to talk about that. And the other huge thing is we have through bargaining, these teachers, when they retire, if they have a hundred and fifty sick days, they'll get ten thousand dollars in the, to take with them in the retirement. That's a year plus of health insurance. And, and that used to be two, twenty-five hundred, we now have it up to ten thousand. It's a wonderful perk for our dedicated staff that come to school every day. So.
Remind me what the policy or the procedure is for the teacher that's anticipating retirement? Do you request that they notify you in the spring prior to?
Actually, the agreement states that they need to, to be able to take advantage of the bonus, they have to tell us by May first. So, in writing, by May first.
By May first.
Yeah, and I think I have two in writing already. And I think I have two that are, have verbally talked about it.
And so, you know, as a board, it's based on the teacher contract, if someone misses that date, let's say that something happens in June, you know, a life scenario and they wanna retire, they can petition the board to go ahead and still get that ten thousand dollars. We would grant that. More, it's, it's for us, that May first is a staffing planning part, training period. There is an opt-out or an opt-in if there's some special circumstance after that.
All right. Do you have a, yeah, do we have a motion to pass the employee recommendation?
We did that, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
We did personnel update, but we do not have-
We just did the switch. Yeah, could we verbally have a motion to approve the personnel recommendations? I gave you new hires and things like that.
So, anybody wanna use motion for that in a second?
I will.
Thank you, April. All those in favor?
I oppose.
Yeah, my, that, that's on me. And, and before I sent it over that way, I must've deleted that, so.
So, I'll do the operations as well because I was fortunate enough to be in attendance at the ball game, basketball game against Newcastle. Go Hornets, what a great game, physical. But I also could see, because there's brand-new lights in the gym and that, it, it, we had a girl come into the doorway and she stopped one of the phys ed teachers and said, "Did they paint?"
It is brighter.
It is brighter. It's, yeah, so they're, they're fluorescent and they're, they're, LED maybe, I don't know. They're LED, right, yeah. So, there's a, also a grant there too that the cost, cost is shared with I P L. And then, over time, over five years, it's completely paid for. So, it's a good, good opportunity for us. So, that was a nice update. And Mr. Bear is diligently working on about two hundred and twenty, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of updates, upgrades, and different things. We just purchased a chiller for the top of Hornet Park. No, South Grove. South Grove. So, sixty-three thousand dollars, gonna be up on your roof. But we need them, you know, we, certain things, when they, when they die, they die. And that's, so we've been eyeing that one and we knew that it would not work in August.
The old gym?
The old gym, yeah, yeah. So, we knew it was gonna, you know, kick the bucket, so we went ahead and ordered it. So, that should be put on when the ice is off. So, so he's doing a lot of things like that. We carpeted somewhere to finish out. I think South Grove is done now with all, all new carpet. I think the whole building's done.
He's got like three more rooms he's interested in.
Okay, but I think we, I think we allocated dollars to completely finish your, your building. So, in the high schools, much better. And did you get carpet in the staff room?
Maybe. The faculty?
Yeah, yeah, good. Okay.
That list is in your board packet on the second tab in there along with the, the cash balance flow. There's a second tab just called sponsor project. So, you can go into that. It's a great detail.
Can I tell them about my cafeteria?
Yes. I'm getting for president, can't you tell?
Absolutely. I'm so excited about the South Grove cafeteria. So, amidst a conversation with my husband, he was talking about how Chartwells was gonna give some money to the high school to repair the greenhouse. And I said, "I think I'll ask Chartwells for some money to help fix up the South Grove cafeteria because in the twenty-two years I've been there, it hasn't changed at all. Wallpaper's coming off and it just, as much as we try to keep it looking clean, it, it just doesn't look clean. And we probably have more children going through the South Grove cafeteria than any other of the buildings, having children eat in the cafeteria with seven hundred and thirty-seven students. So, I reached out to Dulcie and Jackie with Chartwells and she, they, they came out, met with me and we think at spring break, they're just gonna give it a facelift. They're gonna paint. We don't need new tables, we don't need anything like that. We have all good stuff there, just a facelift, clean it up, paint it." So, I was really excited because I thought we, we, my South Grove kids eat a lot of their food. So, so I'm just excited about that. So, it's a nice little thing that Chartwells is gonna do for us. We appreciate that.
Good partners with us.
Yes, yes. And you guys got a chance to see the cafeteria this morning. A lot of, a lot of kids, you know, but it's gonna be pretty. Thank you.
Okay, let's move into the quotes, bids, and donations. Can we get a motion to approve the donations as presented?
I'll move.
April, thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jill. All those in favor?
Opposed.
Okay. Looking at other business, we can a motion to approve the fundraiser requests?
I move we approve the fundraiser requests.
Thank you, Jill. In a second?
I mean, I'll second.
All those in favor? I oppose. Carrie, we need a motion to approve the field trips?
I'll move.
Thank you, April. In a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jill. All those in favor?
I'm.
Opposed. Carrie, we don't have any policies to review this evening. As far as our committee and community reports, just another reminder that we have another strategic planning meeting on the calendar for Tuesday, February twentieth. That's gonna be at Beach Grove Middle School at six-thirty. Another one on Thursday, February twenty-second, that's gonna be at the high school, also at six-thirty. Okay, I think, moving on to board members and superintendent success stories. Of course, we wanna recognize Dr. Bear, wish she could've been with us this evening so we can congratulate them. So, we'll do that again next board meeting. And we'll go around, why don't we go ahead and start with Janice and move this way? You guys have our success stories.
No, we just had a lot of good things happening in Beach Grove. But I guess we've kind of been, a winter time is the time that we tend to go toward athletics a little bit. And we've been very successful in a number of programs. And we're glad to go to the state finals in wrestling for two of our boys. And we've got our fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Yes. And congratulations on Ethan being named valedictorian as well for the Classic of Thousand Eighteen.
Thank you. Thank you. My success story is from this morning. Thank you so much for the breakfast.
I didn't have anything to do with all that, but I'm glad you came over.
Well, I, I have to say, I really enjoyed it. When we sat down with the leadership, I was just so impressed with them because to me, they were everything that's good about millennials. They talked about service and dedication and making a difference in the lives of others. And I think they've been called into their professions. And I really walked away feeling like they're a missing piece of our puzzle. Our students need that kind of support and engagement and to be fed and help with homework. And I'm thrilled because I feel like they're in good hands after meeting the leadership team today. So, very grateful and wish you very nice, yes.
Oh, I, I, well, yes, I actually, I went to the girls' basketball game and it was so disappointing. Oh, my gosh, nail-biter, the whole game. But it was just really amazing. I, there were just so many parents and grandparents there and that was really fun. And then, like, same weekend, seventh and eighth grade boys' basketball and swimming. And like you said, we tend to flock to sports and the boys were at wrestling. But, you know, it's kind of a nice hibernation, something to look forward to. And it's so cold. And those kids just work so hard. So, I, those girls, they've, you know, they've been like this since they were five and, and you could tell. So, I just, you know, shout out to our coaches and teachers. They, you do a good job keeping everyone active, engaged. It's really nice. And I'll be at the play Thursday, Friday, I mean, Friday and Saturday if anybody wants to come by ticket.
I, I just wanted to, just to point out that the champions' basketball game is a really great, really great activity. And, you know, the kids don't have to be there and they go and they cheer. And it's just really nice to, that they, that we have activities like that. So, I appreciate that.
And I would add the whole bleachers empty at the end of that game to come out and surround the kids. And the whole, all the students just came out and just surrounded those kids. It was, it was really cool inside.
And I'd like to commend the people that do the social media around those things, especially Instagram. They do a really, it seems like at the winter sports, it's a little bit of stronger push. But it's nice for those of us that can't be there to sort of share in the pre-game and post-game glory through those pictures shared on, on those social media pages. They, they've done a nice job with those.
Give a shout out to Jim Pick as well. He seems to do a really good job of keeping things updated. Oh, our, our other school employees do as well. But I think he does a really good job of being really positive about things that could be negative, I guess, first of all. And just to be a real part, an integral part of continuing to care, I think.
And I'm gonna add Nick and his, his staff. And it's been fun because we're streaming these ballgames live, just like this board meeting is being streamed live right now. I should have some students out there from our class watching this. So, by the way, Nick can tell me who's watching it. No, they, actually, our students from the class Tom and I teach have to watch this board meeting tonight at some point in time. But, you know, I forget, it was one night I couldn't be here. Actually, I had to go home the night the girls won the conference championship. So, on my drive home, I've got my phone there watching the game when I get home.
When you're driving?
Well, I was listening to, when I got home, I just opened up my computer there with the link. I saw the whole second half sitting on my, I mean, it was just instantaneous.
Just on YouTube? Is that what it's on?
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's on our, our, our Beach Grove student news. And, and it just streams out automatically. And so, if you come to like Saturday's game, or when we have a game, it just, boom. And it just goes out every place, which is really cool.
I know, they must do some, do they do something at ten-thirty every morning? Okay.
Ten forty-four.
Ten four, well, okay.
So, Nick and his team work really hard at this and Jim Pick's part of that by doing the announcing. It's, it's just kind of a neat thing, you know, our alumni can watch it from anywhere in the world pretty much instantaneous.
Probably need to advertise that a little more, that, that stuff, because I don't think people know that, do they?
It'd be nice to maybe get a schedule, you coordinate with Mel to make sure we put that on our supplies, when it's gonna be livestreamed. You know, they can look at the activity calendar, but, I mean, it's, it's kind of fun here to see that. So.
All right, well, then let's go ahead and adjourn this evening. So, we need a, a motion for that.
I'll move.
Thank you, April. In a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jill? Or Janice? Okay. All those in favor?
Right.
Done. All right. Principals, thank you so much.